I would like to call the Monday, January 27th, 2020 meeting of the Blue Springs Planning Commission to order. If I could ask everyone to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening to everybody as well as those of you watching us from home. I will run through the agenda real quick for this evening. First item would be the consent agenda. Second item will be a public hearing for a conditional use permit for Coleman Acres. Third item is a public hearing for rezoning on Deer Creek. Fourth item is a public hearing for a plan development, concept plan for Deer Creek. Fifth item is a public hearing for Unified Development Code text amendment. Item six is other business and then item seven is adjournment. So with that, before I ask for a vote on the consent agenda, I have an amendment that I would need made, motion made on item vote six that was taken for Eagles Ridge inadvertently has me as voting aye and I was absent.
Mr. Chair, would you like for me to make that correction, please?
Commissioner Banks, would you please?
I would. Okay. Do you want me to word it the way you said it?
Sure.
Okay. That you were absent and they had you down voting aye and it should be that you were absent.
For item six.
For item six.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Does that work? Okay.
Okay.
Before I open the public hearing for the conditional use permit, I want to run through the procedure for a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. I will call for exhibits from our city attorney. Staff will make their presentation. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make their presentation. I will then ask for witnesses in favor. I will ask for witnesses opposed. Then we'll have a general question and discussion among the commissioners and then I will close the public hearing and we will consider it for a vote. I will, if you're going to testify tonight, you'll need to approach the lectern and be recognized. You'll need to be sworn in, state your name and address and then make your presentation. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing for conditional use permit CUP-12-19-7157 Coleman Acres and ask our city attorney for the exhibits.
Mr. Chairman, the city offers the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January 4, 2020. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV land use section Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference. Eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference. Nine, letter of opposition dated January 6, 2020 by Gary Stark's resident. And 10, email of opposition dated January 24, 2020 by Allison Parker, resident. Did you want the additional letters?
Yes.
You've also been handed copies of additional communications in opposition that were received today and you'll mark those as exhibit 11. That's all for you.
Okay. Mr. Stanton, you're going to make the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Chairperson Graham and commissioners. Before you tonight is an application for a conditional use permit to allow the agriculture general use for the keeping of miniature donkeys and chickens. The subject property, as shown on this map, is approximately 3.56 acres and it's currently zoned residential estate. The applicant is proposing to keep two miniature donkeys and 16 chickens total on the property. From a land use perspective, the agricultural general use allows for the production of livestock, dairy products, poultry or poultry products. Additionally, the agricultural general use has a special use standard of requiring a minimum site area of three acres. The applicant's property is currently zoned residential estate and contains approximately 3.56 acres, which satisfies the criteria to apply for a conditional use permit per the Unified Development Code. In regard to zoning, the subject property is currently zoned residential estate. As spelled out in the Unified Development Code, the intent of the residential estate district is for very low-density residential development and agricultural land uses. In the residential estate zoning district, agricultural general use is allowed only via a conditional use permit, which is why the applicant is before you tonight. Surrounding properties along Jealouson Road are also zoned residential estate and there exist nearby properties within Jackson County currently with livestock uses. The applicant has provided an aerial site plan of their proposed property with the proposed layout of the animal facilities. In order to mitigate visual impacts of the proposed use, the applicant has provided a, has proposed a fence completely enclosing the land animal area as shown on this map. All facilities for the animals will be behind the front building line of the principal structure on the, on the property, which in this case is the residential house in order to minimize visual impact from Jealouson Road. Also, the donkey house that is proposed has a significant setback from the eastern property line in order to minimize visual and noise impact on neighbors to the east. And there exists tree lines currently on the property that will also help screen the use and the impacts from properties from the east. So in the staff report, there are four conditions, which include a condition to require that the miniature donkeys and the chickens be kept only within the proposed screening fence and also a condition that no more than two miniature donkeys and 16 female chickens or hens be kept at any one time. Male chickens or roosters will not be allowed at any time. And with that, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the four conditions noted in the staff report.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Stanton? Yes, Commissioner Casey.
Could you elaborate on the, or has the applicant elaborated on the type of fencing that's going to be used here?
I'll allow them to elaborate during their presentation, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Stanton? All right. Thank you, sir. Would the applicant like to make their presentation? As I said, you'll need to be sworn in.
Do you sound swear to the devil to your children, nothing but to yourself?
I do.
And then I'll need both your names and address, please.
My name is Isaiah Coleman.
Into the mic, please.
Into the mic, please, yes, so we can hear you. Thank you.
My name is Isaiah Coleman. I live at 2550 Northeast Jealouson Road, Blue Springs, Missouri, 64014.
Hi, I'm Catherine Coleman. I live at 2550 Northeast Jealouson Road, Blue Springs, Missouri, 64014.
All right, thank you. Floor is yours.
First of all, good evening to everyone. I'd like to say thanks to Nathan, Brad, the city of Blue Springs, the planning commissioners and anyone else here for our petition. Until I joined the military, I grew up on a farm.
Can I ask you just, you don't have to be quite so close to the microphone.
That's good.
Okay, thank you.
Until I joined the military, I grew up on a farm taking care of various livestock to include donkeys, chicken and other farm animals. I have extensive knowledge about the care and well-being of farm animals. My wife Kathy grew up with horses and livestock as oil. Our chickens, which will be hands-only and no roosters as mentioned, will be for pets, eggs and my therapy. They will be kept in a very big professional-built chicken coop, which is close to the Jealouson Road and up by our house on the north side of our property. It will have an attached cupboard run, which you have in the packets that we gave to you pictures. Female chickens make hardly any noise and when they do, their volume is lower than humans. Because of the way we keep them, we will keep them and their area clean, there will be no smell. More information in the packets given. Miniature donkeys are odorless as well as their height at most is three feet tall. As with both chickens and the two miniature donkeys, we will have everything we need built prior to them, to their arrival, including a secondary fence, which will be positioned away from the current fence, so there will be no donkey access to any neighbors. We also are installing a farm gate and fencing, farm fencing vertically down our property. You saw the diagram there. The donkeys and chickens will be kept only on the north side of our property, inside that fence area and with no south side access. I yield to my wife.
Hi. A little information he doesn't like to always share, but Isaiah, can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm short. Isaiah is a retired military disabled veteran. He served 22 years in the Army as an intelligence analyst from 1977 to 1999. He is a current federal government intelligence analyst, driving from Blue Springs to Fort Leavenworth every day to work. The past 14 years, I have only seen him four years of those. He has deployed four times to Afghanistan, three times to Iraq and Kuwait. He is now finally finished deploying, hopefully, and has been patiently waiting for many years for the opportunity to have chickens for eggs and for his therapy. The mini donkeys will also be therapy for his military disability and war zone effects. He grew up with chickens and livestock on a farm and couldn't wait to be able to have hens as pets and for fresh organic eggs and miniature donkeys. We found this house on approximately four acres, thinking he could finally have his chicken and two mini donkeys, which by the way are approximately the size of a St. Bernard. The mini donkeys will protect the chickens, be pets for us and our kids and grandkids. They will also be for Isaiah's therapy. Chickens and donkeys pretty much are smell-free and noise-free. They will be kept clean, fresh and healthy. Thank you.
Mr. and Mrs. Coleman, would you like to have your handouts entered into the record as exhibits?
Please, yes.
Okay, I've marked the female chicken hen information as exhibit 12 and the miniature donkey information as exhibit 13.
Thank you.
All right. I would like to say thank you for your service. And any of the commissioners have any questions for the Coleman's? Commissioner Casey, did you answer your question on the fence?
I guess, I guess just the, is it going to be like a chain link fence or?
No, standard half-inch fencing is used on the cattle.
Farm fencing.
Farm fencing.
Okay.
If we can afford it, we were thinking about a tall privacy fence. So that's, that's a consideration.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for the Coleman's? Commissioner Banks?
Well, it's going to be taller than the donkeys, right?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Because otherwise the donkeys will rub their neck on it and they'll tear it up.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, and the miniature donkeys, like I said, miniature donkeys is what we get to of. They're only at the most three feet high, so they're.
So you'd have to at least have a four foot.
Oh, I was thinking six or eight.
Well, I have six feet at least.
I was thinking at least six foot, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. Commissioner. What, do you know what setback the fence would be from the property line?
Yes, for the, for the owners to the east of us, it'll be 20 feet back from that fence that's currently there. So you have 20 feet back that way to my neighbor to the north, it'll be 20 feet back from her property, from the road, it'll be 20 feet inward and from our house, it'll be pretty much parallel to the chicken run, so we didn't close that also. Even though the chicken run and the chicken house would be one unit, that fence itself enclosed that also.
Okay, thank you.
You are.
I have another question.
Yes, Commissioner Banks.
I raised, I lived on a country too, so are you going to have a compost pile container?
We already have one.
We already have.
Okay, because even though they might not stink, other things that come out too.
Sure. In fact, I'm currently composting as well.
We compost and have a huge garden, so we have a compost bin.
And that's located on the south side of our property, the very corner, Brenda's residence.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if you had thought of that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and it's good fertilizer too, I hear.
Oh, it is. You have a plan on the garden too?
Yeah, we put it in the garden.
All right, any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Fairbanks?
I'm curious about the layout of your land.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it looks like the property to the south could easily be parceled out and sold to another owner?
We can.
And if in fact that occurred, the acreage that you have now, which would allow this conditional use, would no longer be valid.
Well, I can tell you right now, ma'am, and my wife agreed, we have no reason to ever sell our property. She's been there anything.
We've had people knocking on our door and we told them no.
So that's, this is our forever home.
And we bought it for the land, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but you're not going to live forever.
No. Oh, you mean at?
No, in fact, I was told that this goes to, once we die or go away.
Our miz.
This use goes away also. It doesn't grandfather someone else, so.
So it doesn't travel with the land?
Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Cradoff?
Could you reiterate how much experience you have with caring for animals?
Well, prior to joining the military, I, like I said, I was raised on a farm. Every day we had pigs, chickens, cows, donkeys, cattle down Louisiana and it was my job to hay, feed them, clean them, brush them.
Bring the eggs in.
Yeah, of course, green eggs, lop the hogs every morning. I mean, it was my life until I joined the service. And throughout my service, a couple of times when we were stationed at our neighbors behind us, we had a couple of chickens in our backyard, so, and we were living in Leavenworth, our neighbors had chickens. I mean, I'm well-versed at all aspects of chickens. In fact, when I was in high school, I was with the FFA and I judged chickens also prior to that.
Well, thank you. I'd like to thank you again for, for serving.
Yes, sir.
I talked him out of putting pigs on the agenda.
I do have a few more.
Okay, Commissioner Banks?
And thank you for your service.
Yes, ma'am.
My husband's military. As far as raising them is one thing, but have the experience of, you know, you're going to have to have the donkeys have shots and wormed and the hoofs done and the.
I've done, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you're budgeted for all the feed for the chickens and everything else that you're going to need?
Oh, absolutely, ma'am.
Okay, because it's one thing to have them and then forget that there's other expenses to that.
Yes.
Well, I may bring up, this is not one of the things where I'm asked for permission to have these animals in there, it'd be forgotten, be just way with pets running around outside. That is not the case. It'd be treated just like our pets inside and ourselves, you know? Make sure they're properly fed, properly watered, the right place to lay down in frigid weather during the winter and also the heat in the summer from biting flies and all the heat. So I've taken all the considerations for his feed, getting a vet who is animal, you know, trained to come out and do all vaccinations.
We already talked to Dr. Kavanoff, who is our vet.
Right.
And he's already given us a veterinarian that would come out. And the donkeys are probably going to be down the road because we have to build a shed and stuff, so the immediate would be probably the chickens.
Okay, do you have a dog or a cat already?
Indoors, we have dogs and cats.
Okay, you understand donkeys can kill a dog?
Oh, I've raised them.
And they're very territorial?
Oh, yeah, I know about that.
That's why we're putting the fence down.
And chickens don't like cats, so you're really mixing it up here.
Yeah, we are.
Our cat doesn't go, does not go outside.
Okay.
But that's why we're putting the fence in with mesh. We have meshing, so our dogs couldn't even get to that side.
I'm just asking so that, all right, thank you very much.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Any, yes, Commissioner Fairbanks?
How long have you owned this property?
We bought the property back in 2017 in the fall from Alan Mosby, Mosley.
Okay.
And you chose not, I mean, you chose to purchase this land that is in the middle of a single-family residential instead of purchasing something that is already agricultural-zoned?
I assumed, I thought, I thought I read that if you have three acres or more, you could automatically get chickens, which now I know that not to be the case, but two houses down, there's horses, so there's ripe past of, there's, you know, horses and other livestock and there's cattle across the street, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cradoff?
With concerns of odors, how can you ensure that there wouldn't be a problem with, with somebody might think there would be?
With odor? Well, two things. First, the feces, manure of a miniature donkey is small as a regular dog. And secondly, I would be picking up their waste every day like I would do our pets when they go outside to potty. And as far as chickens, the same would be done also. Once the grass is all eaten off that chicken run here, which is grass now, of course, it'll be gone pretty soon, then I'll lay down some grass, I mean, sorry, some leaf mulch and put that down as the manure mixes in with that. Then I'll go ahead and be moving that out, putting fresh stuff in it. So it'd be something I'll daily, or weekly check and make sure that's all good to go.
You sound like you're an experienced veterinarian.
Quite, sir, quite.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir. If you want to come forward, be sworn in.
Do you sound swear to the devil to your children, nothing but to yourself?
I do. Jim Beamer, 1809 Northeast Kestrel Drive, Blue Springs, Missouri, 64014. I'd like to implore the commission to deny this permit. I live two blocks away and I live in the Falconwood Estates subdivision on Kestrel Drive, northwest corner of Kestrel and Jure Falcon. Even though I'm two blocks away from the affected homes that are on Prairie Falcon Drive, the Coleman's live behind them. Thank you for your service, by the way. And even though I might not be affected by any smell or anything of that sort, if those property values are affected in the years to come, that will affect my property values and my surrounding neighbors. There's 49 homes in Falconwood Estates to consider, so that's not just affecting four homes, it's affecting kind of ripple effect, you might say. So I can't say for certainty that this is going to decrease my neighbors' property values, but I can't say for certain that it's going, not going to decrease their values in years to come. When those homes change hands, they may see the chicken farm and think, no, we'll go somewhere else and that owner will be forced to go down and down in price. That could be, that's a scenario that I'm afraid that would happen. So I would ask the commission to deny this permit.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Beamer? Yes, Commissioner Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Coleman had mentioned that there were other houses in the area that had livestock. Are you not concerned about those or is it really?
Well, the one with the horses was there before the neighborhood was built in 2002, so I can't speak to that. But I can speak to this. And yeah, I also am aware of the Rupert Farm on the other side of Jealouson Road that has cattle. They were there many, many years before Falconwood Estates was ever, ever developed. So I can't speak for the horses and I think it's just two horses, if I'm not mistaken. And the family that used to live on the corner of Prairie Falcon and Kestrel, they moved because of those horses, even though they were there before they moved there. And they moved away and they had a hard time selling that house and it sold for like $221,000 a few years ago. That's how much it drove down the property value, the horses did.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cradoff?
I had the same question.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Beamer? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
I'll do him and then I'll give you.
Do you sound swear to the devil to your children, nothing but to yourself?
Yes. My name is Matthew Milbrot and I live at 1711 Northeast Kestrel Drive in Blue Springs, Missouri, 64014. And I too would like to have this application denied. My concerns are, one is that in the last year or so, we've had a fairly large band of coyotes that have been traipsing around our property. We live on the extreme north edge of the subdivision and what's on the other side of us is about 11 acres of land. And you can hear those coyotes up and down that fence line. And I'm afraid those coyotes will be drawn towards these animals. And if they're drawn toward those animals, anybody that has pets are going to be at risk. Small children could be at risk. And I, just, just two weeks ago, we had, I got woken up at 10:30 at night hearing the coyotes coming through and it wasn't one or two, it was five or six or seven and they made three or four passes through that area that one night. And we've had a couple of people in our subdivision have animals that have been taken by the coyotes. So that's my concern. And Jim's, there's farms that have been there before we had our subdivision built. There was one that was right on the, let's see, the northwest corner of our subdivision had cattle. And the fly problem that we had, all the people that lived on that north edge, you couldn't sit outside at night because, or even in the day because of all the flies that were drawn because of the animals that were there. So I don't know if that would be a consideration here or not, but I really don't want to see that happen. I also don't want to see my property values go down after the great increase I had just past year from Jackson County. Why don't I want to see my property values go down? So that's my concern. Thank you.
Okay, could I get you to, we didn't quite get your last name, sir.
It's Milbrot, it's M.I.L.B.R.O.D.T.
Okay.
Matthew.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Cradoff?
I'd like to ask the applicant, could you respond to what he just said about?
Well, can I give him, I was going to let, and then I'll let the applicant come back up after.
Okay. Any questions for this witness?
All right, thank you, sir.
You go.
Do you sound swear to the devil to your children, nothing but to yourself?
I do. Kevin Horrell and I live at 25, last name's H.O.R.R.E.L.L. I live at 2509 Northeast Prairie Falcon Drive and it's the house that is immediately behind where he, on the other exhibit that he had up with the, with the fence drawing on it, to where the middle of my backyard will be directly facing, as it looks like from that picture, directly facing that barn. So a couple, a couple of points of clarification about, about the property. Yes, there is a, a small tree line on that property. I've lived in a house for four years and we've lost four trees just in those few years that we've lived there from storms. They're very old, it's actually one of my biggest concerns, but they are on my property. And there's also a fence that's currently there. It's incredibly inadequate to really keep much of any animals from crossing that boundary. I do have a, a six-foot fence around my property, but it does not run that back length of it, quite frankly, because it's a nice view. It's for the most part an open field, it's kind of a natural setting with kind of an old farm fence and there's a gate on that property, but in no way, shape or form is that prepared to hold any animals back. I do have two dogs, two kids under the age of six and, you know, although I understand that, you know, there's a difference between donkeys and chickens and, you know, a herd of cattle in somebody's backyard, at the end of the day, 25 animals is, I believe, is what the original permit was for based on we've reworked, but it might have been reduced to 16. So then 18 animals is 18 animals and that's just a lot of, a lot of maintenance, obviously. And, you know, one of, I know one of the arguments for this was about the size of a St. Bernard, but nobody in our neighborhood lets their animals stay out 24/7. And, you know, that environment that that creates, he's absolutely right about the coyotes, our best friends in the neighborhood. Their dog only lasted about a year and a half after it got attacked, so that's absolutely a real concern of ours. Every house along that property line, with the exception of one, does have animals that live there, so certainly the safety of them and the nuisance that that creates. At the end of the day, you know, we bought a house in a neighborhood next to, you know, certainly a nice set of property, but we didn't buy a house next to a farmland and agriculture. So, you know, if that's what we wanted, we certainly would have gone, you know, I think elsewhere if that, if that wasn't a big deal to us. But that would dramatically change not only the view, aesthetics, I think the personal property has absolutely been addressed already, but it's, it's a real concern of ours. And it mentioned that the house with, with the current horses behind it, it is, it's just since we've lived there, it's on its third owners. And so it is constantly flipping. It's actually, if I ever get my court date confirmed to argue the property taxes, that's going to be a big part of my assessment case. So obviously I'm, you know, hope that you guys are in opposition of this petition and, you know, if for some reason it is approved, I would love to hear a little bit more about the fencing. Sounds like it's very undecided on what they want to do, which is another major cause of concern, because there's been no commitments made today on what that fencing is going to be. So if we approve this, then down the road, who knows what's actually going to go up.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Horrell? Yes, Commissioner Fairbanks?
You're the second person to address the coyote issue. What have you done to try to alleviate that issue? I mean, have you contacted animal control? Have you contacted police? Have you, what have you done to try to rid the area of coyotes?
I personally have not done anything to try to rectify the coyotes.
I personally have not done anything to try to rectify the coyotes.
Thank you.
It's also not currently a major problem on our property, but if, you know, if there was 18 animals within 200 feet of my property line, you can bet it would be.
Commissioner Cradoff?
So is it your belief that the coyotes are going to disappear if there's no animals there?
Uh, no, but it absolutely would increase the issue of them being around.
I just don't understand how they could be allowed with animal control, how they would continue to be allowed.
I have just a little knowledge on that, because I live not too far away, and it isn't animal control with Blue Springs, from what I was told. You have to actually get a trapper. Animal control doesn't do that.
Take care of wildlife?
No, it's a trapper that you hire.
But I guess to answer your first question, I've built a six-foot fence around three sides of my property. And so, like I said, I haven't had any personal issues with it in my property, but that might not stay the same.
Well, we don't have just problems with coyotes in Blue Springs, we have bobcats. So there's, the only problem I see is the attraction to flock toward something that doesn't fly. So, yeah, and I can see your concerns being right next door.
Absolutely.
I know that you don't have any control on coyotes, because by the time that you call, they're gone. We have, and foxes.
Right, we do have foxes in the area as well, too. That I have had on my property.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir. You'll need to be sworn in and then state your name and address for us, please.
I do. My name is Alan Ware. My address is 2501 Northeast Prairie Falcon Drive.
Could you spell your last name for us, please?
W.A.R.E. So I live on the kind of, the house is kind of catticorn on the end. Yeah, that's my, my property. I think they're nice people, they have great dogs. I think he, he does do some agricultural type work on the, on the side, which is, is fine. But my general concern would just be, you know, property value. And me wanting to sell my house, I don't have any plans on selling my house anytime soon, but I don't know how that will be two years from now, a couple years from now, or whatever may happen in life. So my general concern is just kind of having donkeys and chickens and all that. They have several dogs now, which, you know, I think they take care of their dogs for the most part, there's no real issue with that. But I just would be concerned with all of those kind of farm animals around and me trying to sell my house eventually. Property taxes have gone up, as I mentioned, you know, I think we're paying extra $500 or $600. So me doing that, and then, you know, wanting to go sell my house, and then someone's like, oh, there's chickens and, and donkeys in the back just kind of being loud, and, and it would be a concern for me, just in general.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ware? All right, thank you, sir.
Good, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Okay. Mr. Coleman, would you like to maybe answer a few of the concerns over brought up?
Yes, board members. First thing is, one of the gentleman mentioned about the fence, which is to the east of our property. First and foremost, I mentioned and I depicted on here, there will be another fence made, which will be inside, be 20 feet away from that fence line he's talking about. It is a shabby fence. So the donkey would never even get close to that fence. It'll be 20 feet to the west of that fence. And it'll be professionally done, because I know how to professionally do fences, because I was raised building fences. They mentioned about the coyotes, foxes and all that. It's a proven fact. If you have miniature donkeys or animals of that sort, if anything, they would keep those type creatures away from your property. They're more protectants. And also, I would challenge anyone, if there is a case about property value being reduced, I would like to see that, that in writing, because, you know, having farmland around HOA property, I understand the concern about their properties and all that, that's, you know, that's respectful. But the thing is, I did research on all this, and nowhere have I found anywhere where that which we are requesting will reduce the property value of their homes.
Well, on page three of my handout on the chickens, it's number five, property values will decrease, fact. There's not one single documented case that we know of about a next-door family flock that has decreased the value of real estate. On the contrary, local foods and living green is so fashionable that some realtors and home sellers are offering a free chicken coop with every sale. An example of this is at www greewynews.com.
Another point of interest I'd like to make also, one of the gentleman mentioned about the sound of donkeys. Well, I can attest, that is definitely not true. Miniature donkeys and, as well as standing-side donkeys, they only make sound to greet their owners, like dogs to alert you if someone's coming close to their property that they don't know. They do alerts like any other outside pet or inside pet would do. As far as also is a concern about these animals being out there, not being careful, they will have a professionally-built pen for the miniature donkeys to go inside of. A shed, I should say. So that beyond not even issue right there. As well as the chicken coop, it'll be totally predator-proof as well as any bird or prey trying to come from the outside or anything trying to dig on the, on the ground. Or have fencing and everything that you build around that where nothing can dig in or fly in the top.
And I have a comment about the flies that was mentioned.
Yes.
Chickens, let's see, where's that? They will eat just about anything. In fact, chickens attract predators, pests, and rodents, fact. Predators and rodents are already living in urban areas, along with coyotes and foxes, because we keep building houses on their land. Wild bird feeders, pet food, gardens, fish ponds, bird baths, trash waiting to be collected, all attract raccoon, foxes, rodents, coyotes, flies, et cetera. Modern coops are keeping, are ways of keeping and managing family flocks that eliminate concerns about predators, rodents, and other pets. In fact, chickens are a part of the solution to pesky problems. Chickens are voracious carnivores and will seek to eat about anything that moves, including ticks, think about Lyme disease, fleas, mosquitoes, grasshoppers, stink bugs, slugs, mice, baby rats, and small snakes.
Lastly, about the flies also, with donkeys, you know, yes, outside pets will have flies come around. That's a, a fact. Donkeys prefer having a shelter they can get outside, inside away from those biting flies and the heat. That's specifically one of the things where you would have that type shelter during the hot months is to keep them out of the heat and from biting flies. As for what the horses, yeah, horses, they definitely attract more flies. They always waving their tail and all. But that's truly that, no concern or no issue that we couldn't deal with.
And one more comment about Kevin's view into our yard, into our property. It's our property. So, you know, he's viewing a nice view into our property.
And that which we're doing, he'll still have his view and all. So this little shed for two little miniature donkeys is probably the size of two dog houses put together with a little height, because remember now, they're only three feet tall when they're standing. That's it.
And to the north of us on that fence, there's a, what kind of steel, metal building? The shed's going to go up, so it's not really going to block their view. The shed's going to go up to the side or in the corner of that.
Right, you still have the same open view.
Yeah, sorry, one of us at a time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's the mic, you gotta.
Oh, the mic, the mic. So anyway.
It's being recorded.
Yeah, and the chickens are going to be in a run. They're not going to be running loose, so.
Never will they be free run. That's why you had the chicken run, they'd be enclosed but outside grazing. They were never being in that open area, nor would the donkeys ever be outside that containment area, which is that fence built inside a fence that's already there.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. Any questions for the Coleman's? Commissioner Fairbanks?
Number one, I wanted to ask you, what's the sex of the donkeys that you're?
I'm more likely to two jacks. Well, we want to get one jack and one gen, but they were both would be fixed, so it would be no reproduction done.
No reproduction?
Oh, absolutely not. No, no, no.
We're not doing that.
No.
Then the other question that I had for you is, what is the number of dogs that you currently have at your residence?
We have four little miniature dogs. We have one who just passed away last week.
They're from three pounds to nine pounds.
And we have a St. Bernard that we babysit our son, who's a firefighter here in Blue Springs, so, you know, we.
Every, on his shift, we sometime watch.
And you don't have any cats?
I want an inside cat.
A 16-year-old Himalayan cat who stays inside. She's not an outdoor cat.
Thank you. Could I ask city attorney, what is the ordinance for the number of animals that you can have in a house?
We'll have to look it up.
Okay, thank you, because I think, I think that's too many. Or it's right at the max.
I read that you could have four dogs and one or two cats under a certain penalty inside your house, and that's what we have. We have four, four little ones and one cat.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cradoff?
At any point, you think you may get more donkeys?
Not at all.
No.
Two, three's the limit?
No, and it's in writing.
Yeah. And the 15 chickens that we have said also, right? 16, or is it?
No more, and maybe, we may not even get that many, but they told us to put the max
Right.
that we would ever want, just in case. My thought is to start with eight or 10, you know. And talking about 18 pets, I mean, two miniature donkeys and at the max 16 chickens. It's not like 20 cattle are going to be in our yard, size-wise. Thank you.
One other question about the chickens. You said they're going to be inside some type of fence.
Yeah, the chicken run.
All the time?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
We live next door, just some folks that had chickens before. When they were out in the backyard, they used to jump the fence. Sometimes I had to bring them back over.
No, like I explained earlier, this is a completely enclosed, this is in your, you see a drawing of how a chicken run will look. So they have a house they will roost in, and then when they come out and they let the door open in the morning, they have an enclosed run area, which is outside area where they can peck around and do whatever. But no way can they get out of that.
Okay.
It's completely enclosed.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions?
I can answer that.
Okay.
Under the Blue Springs code, you can have no more than four adult animals over the age of six months.
Okay.
Unless you have a commercial kennel.
So we have four dogs, and we have one cat, so we can't have one of them. As you're saying, does it say four dogs or four?
It just says four animals.
Four pets. Inside.
Pardon me?
Inside pets.
Of the same kind? But I wouldn't get rid of one of them.
They're 13 to 15 years old, so we, no.
We're getting a little off track, because we're talking about current pets. We're talking about the conditional use permit. Comments and questions in regard to that. Any other questions for the Coleman's? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion among the commissioners? Commissioner Bellis? He's been quiet tonight.
I know, I know.
I've, I've been in deep thought all night. I'm sorry. I, I do, would like to verify with staff something that was said. Does the conditional use stay with the property, or does it, would it end if the property were sold?
So it does stay with the property. It's on the, the specific address of this. I will note, if the property ever does drop under three acres, the conditional use permit is revoked. So they would have to keep it at the three acres in order to keep the conditional use.
But it, but it would transfer to a new owner, as long as the property was, was the same?
As it's currently written, yes.
It, it can.
And they would also have the same limits of two miniature donkeys, 16 female chickens. Sorry.
There's case law in Missouri that if, in order to get a conditional use permit, if major construction is done to the property, a major investment, then it can run with the land. But that would be, under this case, the only situation where it would.
I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure I, I fully understand. Are you saying it will, are you saying it will or it won't transfer?
If they added a major improvement to the property, it would stay.
So would the fence be considered a major improvement?
Okay, I don't know.
It's interpretation.
It's gray versus white, 26 Southwest Third, 806. And I'm quoting the case, a CUP, "By making a substantial investment in erecting a building on the property acquires a vested right in the continued permitted use of that property." A substantial investment.
It doesn't tell us a thing, does it?
That, that tells us that they'd end up in court, is what that tells me. Okay. I don't really, I don't have another question, if that's where you're going. I don't have another question.
Just waiting to make sure you were done. Commissioner Banks, did you have?
I forgot, maybe, I'll have to come back.
Commissioner Casey?
I just wanted to ask maybe someone with the city, since there are concerns for residents with regards to odor and noise, if we have any kind of standard that we look at with that or that we could determine that it's going to be, it's not going to be an issue for, for neighbors or anything like that?
Yeah, we typically do have, or we do have nuisance code violate, or nuisance code ordinances in, in the, in the city code. And so if, if noise became an issue, or if odor became an issue, there are codes in place that would allow the city to go in and help remedy that situation. So we do, I don't know the standards off the top of my head for odor. I don't know if there's a certain threshold for noise. It is pretty gray and vague in what it says. I believe it says something to the degree of what is deemed to be a news, or anything that is over what a reasonable person considers to be loud. So it's, it's a little vague on that. But we do have codes in place that address both of those.
I guess, to clarify, I'm kind of asking, does the city concur with, with the Coleman's that it's not going to be an issue, or do we, do we not have a firm stance on?
We do not have a firm stance on that. We're certainly not livestock experts and do not have that kind of information as to whether or not they would or would not produce an odor, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cradoff?
I have, I have two questions. I actually have one for you and one for the Coleman's. What is, were there any letters of opposition? They were the ones that were read into, how many of them were there?
Was there six?
Was there six? There were six? Six, okay.
Thank you.
For the Coleman's, would you be willing to put up some type of fence, fence that would maybe hide some of what you're doing there and it wouldn't be visible to some of the, some of your neighbors?
Well, for the back part of our property to the east, I'm putting up bamboo we were planting. That's going to grow about.
Non-invasive.
Non-invasive.
But we could consider a privacy fence, too, as high as the city will allow.
Exactly. And if I can ask, is that within standards if I want to plant running bamboo along the fence line between myself and the neighbors to the east? As long as I do it on my property line, I can do that, right?
Yeah, you're free to do it.
You're landscaping.
Right, exactly.
Any other questions?
This was a well-thought-out plan what I'm doing. Like I say, I'm an old farm boy, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments on the record from the commissioners?
Well, I just want to comment.
Yes, Commissioner Banks?
Since I raise chickens.
Okay.
I know that, the only concern I have is you're, you're putting 16 female chicks together, and I know that it's, you know, they don't make a lot of noise mostly. But it's like putting a bunch of teenagers in a room and all of a sudden they find out they're going to a concert together. They're going to scream, and these chicken hens do make noise. And their neighbors are going to hear it. So I want them to be aware that whatever I decide is going to be based on, not the smell so much, but it could be the noise that the chickens will make. Because the noise across the street, they're going to hear the chickens, as long as they're okay with the chickens.
Sir, you can pick up and comment on the noise.
In regards to your comments you just made, ma'am, yes, chickens do make a little chirping noise and all, that is true. But chickens are not like kids or like dogs in a pack making a lot of noise. Far be that from the truth and all. Where we raised 25 chickens in a coop, and on most days, you didn't even hear them at all. Only thing you really hear chickens' hens when they are laying an egg, they like to announce.
But they all announce whenever they're laying, so they're loud.
They're, they're inside the house, ma'am.
Well, I know, but you could still, yeah, I'm, I'm not debating.
Oh, no.
They're going to hear them. There, it's not going to be where they aren't going to ever hear them. They're going to hear them. Especially if a wild animal comes close, even if the donkeys are out there, the, they're going to sense it, and so they're going to get loud. So I just don't want anybody to. and so they're gonna get loud, so I just don't want anybody to have misconception that they're never gonna hear them, okay? That's my point. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioners on the record? Yes, Commissioner Phillips?
Since, since, since we're on the record.
Yes.
This is, this is my concern. Um, this lot is over three acres, which allows this to happen. There isn't a lot adjacent to this in any direction that is even close to three acres. If this was a whole bunch of three-acre lots, and everybody could have their houses and their, you know, chickens or whatever, and there'd be that kind of separation, I think I would feel much differently, but these are subdivisions that are on the east and the west side of this, uh, property, that are small lots where they can't move, you know, the cows can't be situated away from their lawn or anything like that. So, even though it's allowed on this lot conditionally, the fact that it wouldn't be allowed on any of the adjacent lots, that, that puts me in a position to, to not look at it favorably.
Okay.
Because, just because of the proximity of the much smaller lots.
Okay. Any other comments on the record?
Can I ask them a question?
Sure.
When you bought the property in 2017, it was like the winter or something, did you buy it with the intention that you could put chickens on there, or that that was what you were gonna do, and did you ask whether it was permitted at that time?
You have to come up to the-
I don't know what your plans, if that's the reason that you-
We thought we would be able to get hens for eggs, because it was over three acres.
Did you mention that to your realtor at the time, or ask about whether you could, or check the city?
We were told that it was grandfathered in agriculture. So we thought that we would be able to, when Isaiah happened to call to verify that, that's when we found out that we had to get a conditional.
After you bought it already?
Yeah.
So was it zoned residential when you bought it?
I assume, yeah.
Cause you got a loan, is, did you get a loan?
Right.
Then it was residential when you bought it, so it wasn't zoned agricultural?
Right, which is why we did this.
So you just assumed, did you-
Yeah, we've never bought land before.
I just wanted to find out if you, at that time, bought it with the intention that this was what you were gonna do, but you didn't know? And you waited two years to decide you wanted-
No, it's been taken a year and a half, a year took, we had to combine the plots.
Okay.
They were separated, and that took almost a year going through the different phases to do that, and then we could, can, I think they can attest to the fact that how long we've been working on this.
So there were two lots that you bought and you combined them into one?
We didn't even realize we bought the two separate plots until we started digging into this, so we had to get them legally combined, yeah, we didn't know.
Now, if you'd like to sell the other one, you gotta decombine them.
Oh, no.
That's right, we won't. But true.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners on the record? All right, seeing that, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and so we entertain a motion. If someone was inclined to make one for me.
I can move to, uh, deny the conditional use permit, 12197157.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Fairbanks to deny, and a second from Commissioner Veal. This will be a roll call vote, and just remember, a yes vote is to deny when you're voting.
Planning Commissioner Cradoff?
Well, this is a tough one. My heart goes out to them, but only to what Commissioner Phillips said, I'm gonna have to say yes.
Planning Commissioner Casey?
No.
Commissioner Banks?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stokemberry?
No.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Yes.
Commissioner Veal?
Yes.
And Chairman Graham?
No. I am so sorry, it was denied. You do have the opportunity to appeal, if you would like to. Next item on the agenda, items three and four were the public hearings for Deer Creek. The applicant has requested a continuance to a date certain of Monday, March ninth, and everything will be reposted. Do I need to address the current public hearing that's open in regard to that before we entertain the continuance? Or just, because it's gonna be reposted?
No, I think it's just, you need to vote on the continuance that they were requesting.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion of continuance to March ninth, if some-
So moved.
I have a motion to continue. I have a second from Commissioner Banks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It continues to the March ninth meeting. Uh, next item, public hearing, Unified Development Code text amendment for the sign code updates, and Mr. Jury is going to bring us up to speed on that.
I was trying to raise my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on one second.
I had a question for you about the continuance on, on Deer Creek. Uh, Mr. Phillips mentioned the last meeting about them continuing, uh, with their, uh, coming in to see us. But they, because of the citizens trying to come in, and it's been, it's been an inconvenience for them. Is there any way we could, we could, uh, talk about, uh, them having to come in at another time and reapply?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so to address, uh, what Commissioner Phillips expressed at the last meeting, we requested continuance to a date certain, which the applicant has agreed to, and as part of that date certain, we would add, re-advertise the public notice. So the, everyone within a hundred and eighty-five feet would get a new notification of that new hearing. So we believe that that addresses that concern.
Thank you. And I got ahead of myself, because I'm not ready for you yet. I'm going to, um, I've already gone through procedures for the public hearing. So I'm gonna open the public hearing for the Unified Development Code text amended, UDC-T dash oh-one-dash-two-zero-dash-seven-one-nine-four, at the sign code updates. Ask for exhibits from our attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record for the city. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January eleventh, 2020. Four, draft ordinance amending the city of Blue Springs sign code. Five, Title IV, let me do section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And six, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. Were there any additional exhibits?
Hand out to Planning Commissioner.
I'd like to add exhibit number seven, which is a memorandum dated Monday, January twenty-seven, 2019, from Nathan Jury, Senior Planner.
All right, thank you. Now, Mr. Jury, I'm ready for you to present.
Thank you. Chairman Graham and Planning Commissioners. Um, before you today is the request to repeal the existing sign code, enact a new sign code, and to amend various sections of the UDC, the Unified Development Code, and various other sections within the Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Um, while the sign code is not in the UDC, and thus is not directly under the Planning Commission's purview, um, the proposed ordinance does make some minor amendments to the UDC, and the Planning Commission does have final authority over master sign plan amendment, or master sign plans, and any appeal of administrative decision. Thus, staff does believe it's in the city's best interest to hear the Planning Commission's thoughts and feedback over the entire sign code as proposed, not just the minor UDC amendments. Um, also, this is an educational opportunity, um, for the Planning Commission as decision-making body for certain sign code applications. Um, the Planning Commission should have a good understanding of the proposed sign code, and how to enforce it moving forward with the changes proposed. So going forward, uh, the mayor established in, uh, February of 2019, um, the task, uh, the Sign Code Task Force. Um, this task force was charged with updating the sign code to balance the current interests of businesses and residents of the city of Blue Springs, and to align the sign code with recent changes to sign law, um, due to a US Supreme Court decision such as Reed versus Gilbert. Um, over the last twelve months, the Sign Code Task Force has fulfilled this request. Uh, many meetings were held, um, survey, surveys concerning sign preferences were taken by citizens, businesses, and sign companies. Um, many more meetings were held. Um, over the last month, the Public Art Commission, Development Advisory Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, all held meetings and recommended several changes. Um, on January fifteenth, the Sign Code Task Force accepted all those recommendations, recommendations from those boards, um, except for one, uh, specifically concerning the removal of murals after they lose effectiveness due to the subjectivity of this. Um, the task force added two of their own recommendations at that January fifteenth meeting as well. Um, one, to allow murals to be painted directly on a building, the exterior of a building, and two, um, to allow large residential properties slightly more exempt temporary signage than smaller residential properties. Uh, the sign code presented before you tonight is the code recommended by the task force. Um, so what you see in your packet is what was recommended by the Sign Code Task Force. Um, overall, the proposed code is more content neutral than before, and thus is more defensible in the court of law, um, based on city attorney's review, um, and also a cursory review from the outside legal counsel. Uh, more, it also is more aligned with current public sentiment, um, towards signs using the results from the aforementioned citizen, business, and sign company surveys, um, that we have taken. Uh, for the sake of time, I will quickly go over twenty-four of the most significant changes, um, in the proposed sign code. Um, these changes are explained in further detail in the memo, um, that is in your packet tonight, and I hope, uh, you had a chance to read, uh, at least a portion of the rather large packet, um, concerning sign codes. Um, so overall, um, these twenty-four items, uh, one, it does completely reorganize the sign code for easier readability. Uh, two, it rec, it regulates speech in a way that is less content-based than before. The current code regulates permanent signage by land use. Um, for example, retail uses are allowed more signage than religious uses, um, even if everything is held constant in the same building. Um, the proposed code no longer prefers, gives preferential treatment to certain uses. It only regulates by zoning district and by property or building size. Thirdly, uh, the new sign code exempts all signs that are not visible from off-site. Uh, if you can't see it, we don't regulate it anymore. Um, exempts, uh, it also exempts signs, uh, temporary signs located on small residential properties, um, without any regard to message, um, provided they do not exceed a cumulative total of sixty square foot of signage per property. Um, all signs maintain a ten-foot spacing when located within ten feet of the right-of-way, and no sign may be larger than six square feet, um, except, uh, one sign can be up to eight square feet on a small residential property. Uh, it also exempts temporary signs on non-residential property in a different way than before, and on large residential properties, um, provided that they do not exceed a cumulative total of eighty square feet of signage on any given, uh, non-residential or large, re, residential property. Um, the signs have to maintain a spacing of twenty-five feet on res, non-residential property when located within twenty-five feet of the right-of-way, um, and no sign may be larger than eight square feet, except one can be up to thirty-two square feet in size. And so that's the exempt signage, um, that's different than, uh, what currently is based on speech, um, and how we regulate. Uh, sixth, uh, it increases the time vehicle signs may be parked, um, from twenty-four hours to forty-eight hours, um, at, in one spot, uh, to accommodate for the weekends. Uh, seven, it clarifies that any person carrying a non-commercial sign, um, such as a protest sign, is exempt from the sign code. Uh, eight, it requires the sign company or applicant to call in and pass a final inspection before a sign permit is considered complete, um, and has to pass that final inspection. Uh, provides, nine, it provides a quicker administrative process to approve multi-tenant shopping center sign plans, um, which came before the Planning Commission's master sign plans in the past, but this can be done administratively if everything meets sign code. Uh, number ten, it provides a quicker administrative process for minor variances that would otherwise be approved by Planning Commission ninety-nine percent, if not a hundred percent of the time. Eleven, it adds a measurable maximum brightness restriction for illuminated signs. Uh, the proposed code limits light trespass or spill-over at the property line, um, at ground level to point five-foot candles, um, from any residential property line, and one-foot candle, um, at the right-of-way or any non-residential property line. Uh, it also limits light trespass at eye level, um, such as glare, um, as most people call it, to point-three-foot candles when measured at a distance in proportion to the size of the sign. Um, in the previous code, we didn't have any measurable allowance for glare, or measurable restriction on glare. Um, number twelve, we do allow, the proposed code now allows, um, exposed bulbs as part of a sign, um, if it is adequately set back from residential uses. Um, since exposed bulbs are already allowed as a normal light fixture in the UDC, and according to the survey, fifty-one percent of citizens believed that exposed bulbs are appropriate in Blue Springs. Also, it allows full-color digital signs, since seventy-two percent of citizen respondents believe that full color, uh, to the survey, cities, uh, respondents believe full-color digital signs are appropriate in Blue Springs. Number fourteen, it encourages the use of preferred signs, um, such as individually-mounted letter signs and monument signs with masonry materials, uh, by allowing those types of signs to be larger than typically allowed, and thus encouraging that type of sign. Um, it allows large buildings to have adequate amount of building-mounted signage, and allows large properties to have proportionately more ground-mounted signage. Uh, the current code currently restricts all permanent signage on a property based on linear feet of street frontage. Um, thus, large buildings are severely hampered in terms of signage if they only have a small stretch of street fr, street frontage, um, such as the case with many of the second-tier properties along Seven Highway. Um, the proposed code restricts building-mounted signage as a percentage of the size of the building, um, such as the ten percent, um, building coverage, um, many of you, uh, have come to know. Um, if they have a building as big, or if you can build a building that big, you should have signage, um, as, uh, similarly sized proportionally. And it also restricts ground-mounted signage, um, with a minimum spacing now, um, between ground-mounted signs. Uh, number sixteen, it allows pylon signs by right on large commercial properties, um, but restricts, restricts them in size, um, in proportion to the property. Pylon signs are only allowed on non-residential properties for acres or larger. Um, and, uh, number seventeen, the sign code further restricts pole signs to only properties between the frontage roads of Interstate Seventy and properties located within four hundred feet of the edge of pavement of I-70. Uh, further limits wall signs, um, placed above the second story, um, and now refers to them as skyline signs. Um, they are limited to one per building facade, um, to limit visual clutter above that second story. Uh, we all, also, the proposed code now allows, uh, historic signs to be retained and brought back to their former glory. It restricts three-dimensional signs from exceeding the sign restrictions of the most similarly-sized, um, sign type allowed on the property. For example, a three-D sign should not be larger than a monument sign if located on a property that can only have a monument sign. Um, it allows murals in more places than just downtown Blue Springs, provided they complement the existing public art or inspire civic pride and are, are not overtly commercial. Um, it encourages the removal of billboards, um, throughout the city by allowing one digital billboard to, uh, swap out and replace an existing billboard if two other billboards are removed. Um, and in essence, it's a three-for-one, um, on, on, if you take three traditional billboards away, um, you can request approval of one digital billboard. Twenty-three, it reduces the maximum number of ground-mounted and non-building-mounted temporary signs per property, um, per year, but still allows each, to four per year, um, but still allows each individual business, um, such as shopping center tenants, um, to request their four building-mounted temporary sign permits per year. And twenty-four, um, the proposed code does allow feather flags and ground-mounted- And 24, the proposed code does allow feather flags and ground-mounted or non-building-mounted temporary signs to be approved by temporary sign permit as a ground-mounted temporary sign. Those are the 24 biggest changes from the current sign code. The sign code in your packet tonight is what was recommended by the Sign Code Task Force. However, two additional items were brought to staff's attention after the task force last met on the 15th of January. First, in an email from MoDOT, which is in your packet, staff was informed that current and proposed billboard requirements are less strict than MoDOT's in two ways. One, our spacing requirement between billboards is only 1,150 feet, whereas MoDOT's spacing requirement is actually 1,400. As well as MoDOT's brightness at night restriction is more strict than the city's. The city allows 500 candellas per square meter, whereas MoDOT restricts billboards, digital billboards, to 300 candellas per square meter at night. Secondly, in the handout provided as well, outside legal counsel did provide some feedback, and they recommended several changes to the proposed sign code to ensure it will pass constitutional muster in terms of regulating signage and free speech specifically. While these are minor changes in wording, they are significant in their legal implications. Altogether, based on the sign preference surveys, recommendation from the Sign Code Task Force, and other boards and commissions, as well as the new information in the handout tonight, staff does recommend approval of the sign code with the two conditions. First, to match MoDOT's billboard requirements, and second, to comply with the recommended changes from outside legal counsel. So I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Jury? Yes, Commissioner Velasquez.
I'll tell you, I did not read through the entire code. But is there, did we do away with the alternative sign process that we had in the past, or is that still there?
Correct. They're both lumped in with, just as a master sign plan process, just the one application for either.
Okay, because that was kind of a sloppy makeshift thing that we threw. And I was on the previous committee that worked on the sign code, so. And you mentioned that the feather signs are now legal as temporary signs?
With a permit.
With a permit.
Without a permit, they cannot have them, but they, they can ask, commercial properties can ask for feather flags if they get one of their four permits to do that, or use one of their four permits.
And you said there's a spacing requirement on those?
Correct. Feather flags, they are required, I believe, a two-to-one spacing, so if a feather flag is 10 feet high, then it would have to be 20-foot spacing between flags.
Okay. And, because this was, this was, this was one of my peeves of the old sign code, was that we had said they were not allowed, but they were everywhere. And, so are we going to be more proactive in enforcing that, or are we still going to be reactive, only when somebody complains about something in place?
We'll need some direction from administration and counsel probably for that. Takes manpower.
Because I know a lot of this stuff, nothing gets done unless somebody complains about it. And I know we don't necessarily want to have the sign police running around all the time, but when we see something, we need to be able to act on it. The other thing that I did catch when I was going through this, which is also one of my peeves, that I don't think has ever really been addressed in the sign code, you've got in here an exemption for, on the limited visibility, for signs that are inside of a window or a door. And you say that that is only when they cumulatively do not cover more than 25% of the individual window or door. So if they, as is the case in several places around town that I could point out to you, cover the entire window, are they now subject to the sign code, or are they, how does that happen? What happens with those?
Signs erected illegally are not exempt and not grandfathered through. So it is in the non-conforming transitional provisions in the code that if, if a sign was erected illegally, it's not grandfathered in. So if they didn't get a permit, and they required a permit originally, then...
My understanding in the past was that it was, if it was on the interior of the window...
It was exempt.
It was not permitted, or, I mean, it was, it was something that didn't need a permit.
Correct.
So is that still the case, or is, that wouldn't be an illegal sign?
Yeah. That is still the case, yeah. So anything...
But that really bugs me when somebody tries to get around the sign code by plastering the inside of their window full of whatever, you know?
They still do.
I know they do. I don't like that, that's what...
That's what we're saying.
I know. Could I ask, though, you're saying that they can do it?
Under the old code and under the new code, any signage inside the building is exempt.
Even if it's meant to be seen from outside?
That's what the point is.
Yeah.
Correct.
I mean, there's one right across the street, we could, I'll go with that.
The, yeah, the zoning, zoning and planning zoning, UDC, there's not much that we regulate on the inside of the building besides the use. And so that would be a bit of a change from, from what we typically do.
If there's any way we can, you know, again, you've got something in here about them being exempt if they're 25% or less, but...
That's on the outside of the window, yeah, yeah.
That's on the outside of the window? So if you're plastering the poster on the inside of the glass as opposed to the outside of the glass, that makes a difference, even though it's the same?
Effect, yes. We have to...
I wish we could change that.
We have to draw the line somewhere, I guess.
I know, but if it's visible to the outside, if it's meant to be visible from the outside, whether it's on the inside or the outside of the glass shouldn't make any difference. That's just my opinion.
I don't have to buy curtains.
Any other questions? Commissioner Fairbanks?
Number one, I want to thank you for your comprehensive work on this, and I did, in fact, read the whole thing.
Thank you.
I do have a question on political signs on residential with more than 300 minimum linear feet frontage on one street. So with the political signs that we all know get put up, are they going to have an 80-square-foot sign as well as multiple smaller signs, as long as they're 10 feet apart?
So the large residential property, which are the 300 linear feet of frontage, or non-residential as well, are lumped into the same sort of category for how much temporary exempt signage they're allowed, exempt from permitting. So in the case of a large residential property with 300 feet, it doesn't matter what the message is, so if it's political, real estate sign, or anything, we don't care about the message anymore, based on Reed versus Gilbert, some Supreme Court laws. So regardless of message, the 80 square feet would be the maximum they could have on that property, and that's total signage of, exempt signage on that property. So there are limits on the size of each individual sign. So the 32-square-foot max, they'd be allowed one 32-square-foot sign, which would take up 32 out of their 80 allowed square feet on the property. And then the remaining, they could have eight-square-foot signs, all the way up to whatever gets them to 80 on that single property.
So they could have a 4-by-8 sign?
Correct.
And then a bunch of smaller signs, without getting a permit?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cradell?
I have a question from a business owner. They asked me about permits. Once a permit is completed, can it be amended? Can you come back and change it after the fact? If they say it's involving some fees, you can change that after you've already came into an agreement?
They could request an amendment, I believe, to a sign permit, but they'd have to, it'd have to be a quick amendment based on, they couldn't have placed the sign, constructed it, completed the permit, and then come back and ask for two years down the road to amend the permit that was approved previously. And, so I mean, if it's within the construction process and they're amending it slightly, I think that is within staff's allowance to amend the sign permit application, based on their revisions. But if it's a completed permit, based on final inspection and everything, then they'd have to submit a new permit.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Jury? All right. I guess we don't have an applicant then, per se, do we? Just to say. So I'm going to ask if, anybody want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in opposition? You want to make a...
Right. Just want to speak?
Come on.
You want to, come on, I'm fine. You will have to be sworn in and state your name and address for us.
I do. Mark Jones. And what do you want, my address?
Yes, please.
1240 Southeast Scenic Drive, Blue Springs, 64014. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't have much. You guys did a great job. But as, we own Royal Signs, and as a sign company, it is something we look at very closely, and appreciate all the hard work. I just have a couple little questions, and I don't even know if it applies right now, but on the, it has something to do with what you said, Mr., is it Cradell?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay. After a sign is completed, okay, because like right now, I have 12 sign permits I've gotten, not all in Blue Springs. I'm just saying, sometimes it's very, very busy, okay? And guys are finishing signs and all that, and I'm just curious, you want us, you want to be contacted when we finish a sign, so you can go out at some point and inspect it, correct? That's, that's right, okay. I guess my question is, just a logistical thing, because as a businessman, this happens if I forget to call. What's the penalty? I'm concerned, because I, sometimes that's just a legitimate thing that happens. And if you say, hey, this sign never got called on, because most cities have something like that, but none of them ever go back and look at signs that we've done, you know? They just don't. I'm just, I guess it's just a curiosity. Hey, can I just email Brad? Could I send him a quick email note, say, hey, we're done, or whatever? Does that work?
Yeah, and it...
And it doesn't necessarily have to be the sign company, the person you're doing the sign for can call in as well.
Well, but it said applicant, and we're almost always the applicant.
Right.
And so our name's the one on the permit app, so, I mean, is it, it's just a thing, I just want to, that's a new rule, because I know you guys are supposed to go by every, periodically, originally, that's how you were supposed to do it, but it's a lot to ask to go through, and, like you say, I think you went through, you'd go look at a sign that wasn't put up yet, and they got six months, so you're trying to figure out when to go, and this is a way that you, there's a little bit of control, and I understand that. I was trying to find out the easiest way to...
Yeah. I think the code only requires notification to the city, to the administrator, which would be whoever's looking at sign permit. So that can happen via phone call, email, whatever works, and you don't, the sign company does not have to be onsite, because we only regulate signs that are visible anyway from off-site, so I mean, if you can't see it, we're not permitting it anyway, because it's exempt. So if we can see it from the right-of-way or anywhere, then we can just do a drive-by. The sign company or the applicant does not have to be onsite, and, just a phone call or an email to the person working with the sign permit at the city suffice.
Now, what you're doing, you're just making sure that it conforms to the code to what was approved, right?
Correct.
That's what you're doing, basically, that's what you're, to make sure it meets the permit?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we try really hard to do things the right way. Okay, I have one last question. You said something about signs that are not visible. I'm trying to understand what you're getting at there. What are you saying, like on the back of a building or something, that's not visible from the road, or, because we have a sign on our shop that's on the backside, it's my dad's old company, we keep it up there for nostalgia. You know, it's a 2-by-8, same blasted sign, doesn't light, we just keep it back there. I'm just curious what you mean, you know, can a sign be put on a building on a, where there's no road? Can there be a sign on the backside?
Yeah, and there was a little bit of debate at this by the Sign Code Task Force. Originally, we were thinking to just exempt any signs that are not visible from public right-of-way, but they discussed that and thought that there is a little bit of risk to exempt all those signs, since a neighbor might have offense to an ugly sign or something that, that they could see from their side that may or may not be visible from the public right-of-way. So eventually, it came to a head, and they decided to exempt all signs that are visible from off-site, so whether it's a neighboring property or, or a public right-of-way, either way, so if it's visible. There are some regulations on what constitutes visible for a signage, and they're in the interpretation section, but in essence, the, I think the general consensus from federal highway is one-inch letters for 30 feet of distance is approximately what is legible. So we sort of equated that to the, the size of the sign as well, so if a sign is an inch tall, it's not visible if it's beyond 30 feet from, from a property line, in other words. So if it's a, that, or if it's blocked from view of landscaping or a fence that completely blocks the view from a neighboring property and is behind a building, then that would be exempt as well.
Okay. Last thing I thought about, in talking about something that, you said, maybe where is it visible from? For instance, we had something a few years ago on a sign, I talked with you about where, and I don't know if this is addressed in the app, in the sign code or not, but where a sign was, was not on the, like, it was not on 7th Highway, you know, and it was, you couldn't see it from any road, and it was a block away from a road, but the customer, they had a drive-through, they really needed a sign on that side, which we understood, and you ended up approving it, but I'm wondering what's going on with that? Is that something that's going to be taken into order of adjustments, or is that something that you've addressed in the, in the new code?
I'm trying to figure out what?
There was a, over on 7th, there was a sign, and they had a sign on the front, no big deal. They had a little lighted monument sign, but they wanted a sign on their drive-through side, which was on the north side of the road. Well, there was nothing, the first block, the first road was two places to the north. And so by the code, they weren't allowed to have a sign over there. And my question is, even though that was a very visible situation, you know, for them, and they needed one there, you allowed it, but I'm just wondering, in the code, is that something that's been addressed, or is it just still a case by case?
Yeah, so previously, Planning Commission would have had to hear that, yeah. And so, because anything in the mid-block, not on a corner, is, we only allow building-mounted signage facing the, facing the right-of-way or above a main entrance, and in some cases, drive-throughs want signage on the three sides, south, north, and west, in this case, potentially. So in the new code, yeah, we do allow signage on all sides of the building, all four sides. 10% is allowed on the front facing the right-of-way and the main entrance, and I believe any side that is not facing residential directly abutting.
Directly facing residential or visible to residential?
You're testing my knowledge of the sign code right now.
I'm just, because a lot of them are, you know, maybe not facing the residential neighborhood, but it might be at an angle.
So like Melody Acres?
I'm sorry, what?
So like at Melody Acres or something like that? Where you've got Herm Street, and then you've got the Copper Oaks Shopping Center? Is that the type of thing you're talking about on a sign, on the north side?
Well, it's, it's like...
So the proposed, if I may, the proposed code does, it does allow 10% coverage on facades that face the right-of-way, or with the primary building entrance, or are visible from a public right-of-way. So if it's, if it's on the side of the building, and it's visible, but maybe not facing the right-of-way... right of way, so if it's visible from the right of way, it's allowed that 10% as well, except for facades that are within 100 feet. So that's the facade itself, is within 100 feet of a residentially zoned property. So in all other cases, those walls that are not allowed the 10%, are allowed 5% coverage.
Okay. And that's the, you're showing me the new, that's what you've done, that's what they've got, right?
Yeah, this is the proposed, yeah. So 10% on most walls, if it's visible from the right of way, and then if it's within 100 feet of a residential, then it's cut down to that 5%. And it's 5% on any other wall, including like the back wall in some cases.
Sounds good.
I'm done. Thank you very much.
Hang on one, any questions for Mr. Jones?
Oh.
All right. Now you're done. Thank you, Mark. Anybody else that would like to speak in opposition? All right. Seeing none, back up here to the commissioners for comments on the record. Anything? Commissioner Fairbanks?
I thought it was interesting, the surveys that were attached to our packet. It seemed like anywhere from 33 to 40% of the people did not respond to some of the questions. Each question had the number of people that responded and the number of people that didn't respond. And it's like, that's not a real high percentage of response.
It was a very lengthy survey.
Did you have your hand up, Commissioner Banks?
No, no.
I would just point out, Commissioner Cradoff, Councilman Fowler, and myself were on the task force, as well as, my mind's gone blank, I can't think of your name, Laura was on the task force as well, representing the chamber. Nathan did a great job of summing it up all for us. Commissioner Cradoff or Councilman Fowler, any comments that you'd like to add? All right. Any other comments on the record? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Banks?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, and I do want to compliment the work that was done on the UDC text amendment, UDCT-01-20-7194. I think there was two staff conditions?
Yes.
Now, second?
I have a motion from Commissioner Banks, second from Commissioner Beal. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner, no, sorry. Planning Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokemary?
Aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Beal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
And Chairman Grant?
Aye. So that motion passes, and our recommendation will go to City Council on February 3rd at 6:00, where they will have a public hearing as well, I believe. So that brings us to other business. Mr. Mallon, what do you have for us?
We don't have very much, other than we do have at least two applications that will be before the Planning Commission on February 10th. At least two, right? Three, three, yeah, sorry. So we will be back here in two weeks, and just to give you guys a kind of a heads up, those are two rather large projects that have had quite a bit of attention over the past couple of months. They were previously submitted, and one made it before this commission. That application for Cambridge Park was withdrawn and then resubmitted as a, as a different application. And then the other one, the Earhart Estates at Chapman Farms, was withdrawn before it came to the Planning Commission. They formally withdrew as well and have resubmitted, and so both of those projects will be coming back on the 10th, so.
Okay.
Could have a full audience.
You probably shouldn't have said that.
Yeah. We could have a full audience that evening.
It should have been a surprise.
But, no, that's, and then we probably do expect something to be on the 24th as well.
Okay.
A lot of, a lot of items in the hopper, and so it's good to see development activity coming before the Planning Commission.
All right. Any other business? Commissioner Phillips?
It's, it's time for me to do my downtown spiel here.
Okay.
Like to remind everybody that the Downtown Alive fundraiser is coming up. The Piccadilly Dinner for the ladies and men who want to volunteer to help serve are always welcome. The actual Piccadilly Dinner will be Friday, March 27th at 6:00 PM at the Conference Center. The pre-sale discounted tickets event is actually tomorrow night between 5:00 and 8:00 at East Forty Brewery, so. All the ladies, please come join us. The theme for this year is leather and lace, so don't go Google that without some qualification. You may regret it, but... The idea is the rock and roll bands, that, that sort of leather and lace, so.
Okay.
Anyway, the pre-sale is tomorrow night. Come, get your ladies together and come by a table and come have a good time.
All right. Any other business? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'm going to adjourn.
I have a motion, how about a second?
Second.
A motion and a second for adjournment, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, meeting is adjourned.